Yes, we're expecting five.
All right, well, everybody's ready. We have pulled together the, our work session of the Seward Planning and Zoning and the joint work session for the, in Seward Bear Creek flood service area. And it is 17 October of 2022. And then we staff comments. This is Jason.
Yeah, so I'm gonna get us started out here and just introduce what we're doing this evening. So I think it was, it was in July that I, we're looking at updating Title 15, which is the community development, kind of the portion of code that we own. And I noticed that there was a section in there that says floodplain. And so I reached out to Stephanie and said, hey, do you, do you see anything in here that might need to be changed? And she said, yes, a lot. No, but she reached out to FEMA and then FEMA gave us kind of a model template ordinance for communities to adopt either kind of in part or in whole. And which is part of the Title 44 of the-
Code of Federal Regulation.
Yeah, Code of Federal Regulation. So, and we met, so we had a call with our area FEMA people and we actually met with them in person, just to kind of give a little more information when they were up there on their visit. And so, so just kind of, just, we're kind of gonna have a compare and contrast tonight. It's kind of brought together, but there are a lot of portions that align with our current code as far as like topic and section and what and that, what it needs to cover. But then there's, there's other portions that, that we also need to talk about because they're kind of more of a contrast where we don't have those in our code, or we don't want to introduce those to our code because they're not like allowable in our code. Or, or let's say there's something in there that the building, like fire and building part, they're like, we don't want to see that in there because it's, we don't, we don't allow that in our code. And so there's a few things that we're gonna have to look at parsing out. And then also to, with any type of federal code, they have lots of appendices that follow. And for the most part, those really aren't that important to us. And it just would create a longer, more complex code. So we're gonna take a couple of, we'll talk about a couple of definitions that are, that are in those appendices and just adopt them into the main document. And so-
So essentially I'm just saying what you're gonna take from the CFR and put in our code that is applicable?
Yeah. Yeah, so, but we're gonna take a majority of the model ordinance that we're gonna look at. So what Corky has done is the first packet that came out, we had kind of the two documents separately. We had the Title 15 from our code as it currently stands. And then we, we have the model ordinance that FEMA gave us. And so what Corky did is she kind of combined those documents, which is on that laydown, which is what we're gonna kind of go through today. And, and so in that laydown document, what she's done is, she's, it'll be noted, we'll go through it here. But it'll be noted on the left as far as this, this portion right here currently correlates to this portion in Title 15. And so, and for the most part, I mean, I think we'll look at those and we can probably just kind of accept those as is because it's the correct language. I mean, we can have conversations around anything we need to. And then there are some red sections that will come across. Like, let's see, like the, it says right there that, where it has the red brackets up top. You'll see a number of portions in there. We're just gonna have to put our own city-specific information or our own code prop references in there. So those will come across those. But really, I think for the most part, we'll just kind of go through this, really kind of looking at the blue pieces on the side where we're gonna have to kind of contrast. So, actually, do you wanna go to that first one there? That on the very first page, sort of the certification on there, Corky?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go through that. But Corky will obviously be, she's the only good at the work on the document.
Yeah, this one, so now I was just wondering if you could explain what they were meaning by that?
Yeah. So the FB, FM, so the flood boundary and floodway maps are outdated at this point in time. So they've been superseded by the flood insurance rate maps, which is what we have within our community. So they're not referenced in the model ordinance. So it's, it's not something we need to pay attention to because we don't have the flood boundary or the floodway maps. We have a flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps associated with the flood insurance study.
Before we get going, do you wanna talk to them about best available data and get them thinking about that?
Yeah. So I'm gonna pull up the other packet real quick. So in Bear Creek outside city limits, our borough floodplain code includes two different maps that we use to regulate to. So we have FEMA's flood insurance rate maps from the flood insurance study. Those were adopted for our entire community, Bear Creek and the city of Seward in October 2013. They were based on mostly 2009 LiDAR, some of it was updated, or sorry, based on 2006 LiDAR. Some of it was updated in 2009 and cross-section surveys done in 2009. And there was a delay because of a national policy and we didn't adopt that study until 2013. And then FEMA did a coastal study, so we updated our velocity zones or our coastal hazard areas zones in 2016. So that's the flood insurance rate study and spent by FEMA contractors. Outside of town, and the flood insurance study is what you're looking at here for the city of Seward. Outside of town, we have what's called the Seward map flood data area. We have the map flood data area for the city of Seward as well, but the city doesn't utilize it to regulate flood hazard areas. The original SMFDA, as we call it, is based on the 1986, 1995, and 2006 flood events. It's anecdotal data, high water marks, photos. There's no flood hazard modeling in the SMFDA. So we used that for a long time to regulate to, but at very minimal requirements. We didn't meet the Code of Federal Regulations that's in your guys' code or in the Borough code. Couple of years ago, we recognized that, that data was very, not as user-friendly, not as accurate, right? So we collected new LiDAR data and we had a water resource engineer team do new flood hazard mapping. And we ended up with what we call flood depths that are very similar to base flood elevations. So base flood elevations from FEMA data tell us the elevation that flooding will go up to. And our flood depths tell us how deep that water is gonna be at any given location. So it's actually much more usable data for us outside of town.
Do you have the, the height, like the FEMA does and the depth, or do you just use, use the FEMA height and use the other as-
Sure.
Because it don't sound to me that you have to use combined.
So you can see the FEMA mapping for the Old Exa Glacier Hermann Leer Road neighborhood. This is what we've got. This is an approximate A-zone that gives us no base flood elevations. Because there's not a river flowing through this neighborhood, FEMA provided us with, well, you're gonna have some flooding here when Salmon Creek backs up. But we don't have any real information besides the topography of where we anticipate flooding. So we know that the Box Canyon Creek, we've got a water diversion structure, has breached in the past flood events. And so we had the Seward map flood data area that showed the various years of that breaching. And it basically shows the entire neighborhood getting inundated. That's not very accurate data because not every single piece of property where it's inundated in, in all of those events. So when we did the flood hazard analyses, we actually modeled a breach of the embankment. We did aggregation, so stream bed loads. We looked at a comparison between the 2009 data and the 2019 data. So we had 10 years to compare how much sediment was coming down the streams. And we did an average over those 10 years. And we said, okay, 10 years from now, we would anticipate this much aggregation or this much erosion and sediment loading in Box Canyon Creek. And we're gonna include that in our model. So we, we included the sediment loads, we included the breach of the structure. And then we used the same 100-year flooding event that FEMA uses, so the, the 1% annual exceedance probability. And that's what we use to regulate to. Now, so we've combined those three scenarios. And we have much more accurate flood hazard information based on that snapshot in time from 2019. And then we had them go ahead and provide us with flood depths. So you can see in any point, the darker blue obviously is deeper and the lighter blue is just a little bit. So at any point, we actually know what our flood depth is. So this data is much more valuable and useful than the old SMFDA, which was just like, oh, everybody's in the flood hazard area. And we use this flood depth as kind of a flood protection elevation, which is used in the same way as a base flood elevation that FEMA uses. So we can now regulate these areas in the exact same way that we regulate the FEMA mapped areas. So that's best available data and how we're using it outside of town. We collected, so the flood service area, the borough solid waste, and the city has been cooperating on, what do we do about Japanese Creek Aluvial Fan and all the sediment loading and all the flooding that we're having in the Forsakers neighborhood?
There's a line, cannot see that.
I'm very sorry. And I apologize to those of you online that I didn't share the parts of your work. So I'm gonna go back very quickly and show you. The pink is what FEMA provided to us. The purple is the old Seward map flood data area. And the new flood hazard modeling that I described, it's based on the 2019 LiDAR, which is basically bear earth terrain modeling, is shown there. So on the northern portion of the city of Seward, Japanese Creek Aluvial Fan, we have flood hazard modeling that includes Resurrection River. We've got the green, which is the AE zone. So we have, this is the 100-year or the 1% annual exceedance probability flooding event. And then the hash marks show the floodway. This is the high-velocity flooding. And the red lines are our base flood elevation. So these cross-sections, you can see, you know, if I can see one of those numbers. Is that 37 right there?
Yeah.
So the base flood elevation along that cross-section is 37 feet above main sea level. And that would be the 100-year flooding event. Because this data was collected in 2006, it was prior to the paved portion of Dick Raff Road being built. The other FEMA data that we have is an approximate A-zone, which is the pink for Japanese Creek. And we've got an approximate A-zone for Scheffler Creek. Knowing that this data is not accurate any longer, it was based on a snapshot in time that doesn't include all the development that has been, that has been built on the Aluvial Fan, including the paved section of Dick Raff Road. We collected new LiDAR data at the recommendation of the Army Corps back in 2021. And we are gonna put out new flood hazard mapping and new flood hazard analyses this winter. And we will have new data provided to us very similar to what we've got in three of our neighborhoods outside of town. So this is for your consideration. The Flood Board made the recommendation to include the Seward map flooded area that includes our flood depths as part of our regulatory flood hazard area. So when we get to the basis for establishing flood, special flood hazard areas, we also include the FEMA flood insurance rate map and the study that was completed for the flood depths outside of town. So this is for your consideration. We will have new flood hazard mapping. We don't know exactly what it's gonna look like, but I did provide in your packet share, share. Some preliminary data that was provided to us by the Army Corps of Engineers in their feasibility study. And so they did the 5%, or the 500-year flood event. This is what it would end, it would look like on the top picture there. And then they added in sediment loads. And I believe the second two scenarios included a landslide up in the canyon. And then a surgically flood event. Now that I look at the maps, I might, I, I think the second scenario was just sediment loading. And then the third scenario was a landslide with additional sediment loading. So these are kind of preliminary maps. These were based on the old LiDAR data. We have new LiDAR data now and we're contracting new flood hazard analysis of the Japanese Aluvial Fan this winter. So for your consideration, is it something that you wanna include as just kind of best available data? Or is it something you want to include in your basis for establishing special flood hazard areas? Reference the new study that will be coming out and that those properties that have, you know, flood depths would be regulated the same way that FEMA regulates their special flood hazard areas.
I would think having the additional data that you have and you're gonna be modeling or mapping with the rest, that would certainly be helpful with any decisions that we're gonna try to make. And this is a little bit more of a naive question. Is all the changes that have gone out there, whether it's Dick Raff Road or some of the other things that have shifted around there, that's going to affect anything that is, you know, coming through? And I don't know, you know, if it's gonna be significant enough to affect what flooding's in the areas and the rest. I mean, we're, we're still thinking, you know, almost, you know, that whole airport scenario thing. That's a bit of a can of worms. And so it'd be sort of nice to have further information on all of that stuff.
And the Flood Board members might have some opinions as to the, the new data that we've collected and the use of it as we review our permit applications outside of town.
Do you guys have any questions for Stephanie from that? Okay. So as we look at this new document, you can just see kind of, obviously, the first couple of items that are just kind of some definitions and, and authority, like stating authority, kind of understanding what a flood hazard is, which and the reason why we wanna protect flood hazards is just loss of life property and all those types of things. So then we have like a statement of purpose. And then it talks about a 1.4, which is also kind of got an authority section that's related is methods of reducing flood losses.
It clarifies a little bit of, you know, because the private, previous one is just called an objectives. And it sort of provides a little bit more of a direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the wording a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think it's great. We're, this, this language that we're reviewing is definitely, I would say, more full and covers a little more broad, covers a lot more things. So it's good to have these things in definitely. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts about, again, these are already kind of aligned. They're just, they're current code.
Now, the ones with the asterisks again, where the ones that are taken in front of the-
Kind of generative.
Oh, CFR, right. So you're just inserting those in, so it's consistent all the way through. And I liked when you put the blue, either the blue lettering in there to show what we have already in there, what is gonna be, you know, what is substituted or what was already there.
Okay, so then we, from page nine, you step into definitions. And where we have the terms like, the definitions with the asterisks are cited from that. And then where we have, I think that's the term breakaway wall, coastal high hazberia, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and actually flood hazard area. Those are actually gonna be the definitions that we pull from the appendix, some of the needed definitions. Because appendix is, you guys, you saw us really, really long. We don't need a lot of those ones. But these are ones that we, we'd like to introduce kind of into ones that will be used more regularly.
I could make recommendation of a couple others that would be helpful to clarify in definitions, the elevation certificate. So looking at page 28 of the packet of the appendix A definitions.
What is an elevation certificate?
An elevation certificate is a tool that's used by surveyors to, to tell the regulatory team what elevations the adjacent ground is, the crawl space, the first floor. So it gives you, a surveyor comes out and literally fills out a form that's been provided by FEMA to tell us each of those pieces of details. And then you compare the elevation certificate to, you know, the, the base flood elevation, basically.
Just, I feel like I wanna just for a second take a step back. A lot of this is really new to me. But anytime that, and outside of city limits, this happens a lot. But we do have obviously areas within city limits, any type of development whatsoever that takes place in any one of those areas, the Flood Board has to approve, even like moving a-
Yeah, review.
Review.
Yeah.
And I mean, development, I think is a pretty broad term, or it could just mean like moving, like moving some gravel or anything that could have an effect or actually like building. We don't see actually a lot of building in there in those things. But it is something that, this is where we interact. And it's an ever-changing type of thing that we, you know, Seward was built on that action taking place. And so it's ever-changing. New lanes are being created very slowly. But I've even seen a pretty drastic effect on like the Resurrection River since I've not lived here, I've lived about 12 years, 13 years. And even just that's been pretty drastic at that time. And so it's like the airport. And so it is a pretty, anyway, so this is kind of how we're interacting and how it plays into planning and zoning and planning for things like the airport or neighborhood developments in like the upper, in like Northwest Forest Acres.
I would assume that every time you have a, a change where you put a major construction or something, that's gonna affect the, you know, the flooding criteria or the, you know, the name or whatever the designation is of it. Because of, you know, getting again back into Dick Raff Road, that I'm sure has, you know, by putting all of that in, that's probably affected a lot of, you know, the areas that are, whether they're gonna be, you know, more prone to flooding or not. Is that, does that sort of function as a little bit of a dyke or something for that area at all?
It is a levy for flooding from Resurrection River. It is a levy for the release of floodwaters within Forest Acres. So good thing, it protects from Resurrection River flooding. Bad thing, it's creating groundwater table rise in most neighborhoods.
Way on the other side.
And ponding in that, kind of that northeast corner of the, the neighborhood there because there's not drainage across the Seward Highway. So-
Yeah, the dynamics change all the time, so.
Yes. You may also consider, just in the area that we live in, I think this is part of the code that we'll be reviewing. Aluvial Fan might be something you want to add as well. I don't think it's referenced specifically in the code, but because we live on an aluvial fan, I think it's something that could be included in the definition. And then another definition that we talked a lot about with the Flood Board as we review these permit applications is freeboard. And freeboard is basically like adding elevation to a structure so you have additional protection from the base flood elevation. So it's, some communities will adopt a one-foot freeboard or a two-foot freeboard. And that's actually above the base flood elevation, your first floor is built, you know, one foot or two foot of freeboard above that. So that might be something you guys consider in the future.
So does that mean that it's higher than standard, you know, when you're building your structure, that the, you know, the baseline of the house has to be a bit higher than, before you start doing anything?
You might consider adopting levy or levy system because both, or the northern part of the city is protected by levies. They are non-accredited levy, levies, but they are still levies.
That would also affect our overall height of our buildings then? Because if we have as a city, I think 34-foot height height, and if you have this freeboard factor in that, that's going to affect a lot of what you try to put together.
Definitely something to consider. The Flood Board just discussed whether or not freeboard should be included. So those are the other definitions I would recommend, maybe adding.
Go ahead and just, unless anyone has any, any objection, I think we'll go ahead and just consider adding those. Obviously, what we're gonna do with this document is we'll bring this back around to you for whoever wants to adopt the Title 15. One, one of the things that we, where we're gonna remove though is, and then there's a note next to a manufactured home. That's a, that's building code.
I notice we've got that in our definitions currently, but you know why it's in our definitions?
Uh, because our, our own code needs to be updated. There's some stuff that we're looking at removing because of, international building code has changed and what, how they adopt it certain on Seward and allowed and not allowed. But as we do update Title 15, that will bring that into the lineup. But yeah, you're correct. And so this has got a lot of red section. Well, we will put, add specific community information. Stephanie, on that, where it says exact title of study on that.
3.2.
Flood insurance studies, every community has a specific number. And every flood insurance study has, like, every time you have a flood insurance study, you'll have panels that are, you know, each study's A and the next study's B. And I think we're on D now? We might, we might have actually, I think we're still on, so there's a very specific name for the flood insurance study with the community information, but it's basically a community number.
The one that's in our code currently, the state of 2016, is that updated?
That is correct. Yes, yeah, that is the most updated area. And this is where, in the Borough code outside of town, we have added in as a basis for establishing that special flood hazard area, the study that was completed. And so we listed in, in addition to the flood insurance study, the study from Alaska Water Resource Engineering, you know, 2021 study. And so that is an additional flood hazard area that we regulate to outside of town.
How long, how often are these, these old studies updated? It seems like it's, you know, you know, you get it and you put it in print- It seems like it's, you know, you know, you know, you get it and you put it in print, and then there's some new study that comes out. How often do you have changes up?
It's a really good question. So before the two thousand thirteen, uh, our flood hazard maps were from nineteen eighty-one, which would explain a lot of the development that occurred outside of town. So, and we knew, we had our preliminary maps, uh, before two thousand thirteen, and they were working on a national levy policy that kind of delayed our two thousand thirteen adoption. So we, you know, we probably had maps a couple years prior to that, but we didn't regulate to them until thirteen. FEMA is trying to remap communities every ten years. And one of the big discussions for our community, city in Bear Creek and Lowell Point, is do we want FEMA to map instead of just doing riverine studies, actually map the aluvial fan? So in the future, if you guys are all still on these, uh, these bodies, you might be discussing what that would mean for our communities, because aluvial floodplain mapping looks very different from what we see from FEMA now with the riverine studies.
Is there advantage or visit any just to that?
It's much more accurate, and it puts a lot more people in the flood hazards as it should.
And just as we're, something might not be familiar, but when you place someone in a flood hazard zone, it requires insurance, which is very costly. So.
And let me add to that. So when you're placed into a FEMA flood hazard, uh, or flood, or special flood hazard area mapped by FEMA, and you have a federally backed mortgage, you're required to purchase flood insurance. So Lowell Point was newly mapped in two thousand sixteen, uh, or thirteen, sorry. And none of those people out there had ever been in a special flood hazard area. And they got letters from their banks saying, you are now required to purchase flood insurance. And it happened in several different neighborhoods. So it's something to think about. Flood insurance is not cheap. I would think that everybody who lives on an aluvial fan near River should have flood insurance, but that's my personal opinion after eleven years of doing this job. If you adopt a community map, like we've done outside of town with the, um, with the flood depth map, that's not a FEMA map. They're not gonna receive a letter from their bank if they have a federally backed mortgage. They're not gonna be required to purchase flood insurance. The community can't require that. That is a requirement, um, in FEMA map areas. If we have a community map that we use to regulate to, that's not part of FEMA's flood insurance study, those people are not gonna be required to purchase flood insurance. It's just a community map that's kind of over and beyond what FEMA has provided to us. So just to clarify that, not everybody, if you mapped, or if you started regulating to the special flood hazard area from a new community study, not everybody's gonna start receiving those letters, if that makes sense?
But it, but it does require that they build, which the benefit is then, and on the community regulation map is then the, the requirements for building go up according to that area. So that's a kind of a good thing, is then you're building for the possibility, although you don't have, you don't pay for the insurance, which is, you know, like that would include, you know, giving so much freeboard or something like that. Which the building, because the city can enforce the building requirement for that area. And I think the way you put it is protecting your investment. Yes, so, so there is that, that adopting that community map does kind of have some upsides. I mean, it's a little more expensive to protect your property, if that's kind of what you want to do.
Would you want to?
Right.
Sure.
Okay, so, kind of going through, yeah, I think that penalties for non-compliance, that's something we'll have to, we're digging into that as a city in general. Kind of reworking our non-compliance. So that will be something as well.
The borough went through that about a decade ago. We now have a code compliance officer. There are violation fees.
Yeah, and they have a third game a lot. I've talked to those people, and it's, it's, it's a good thing that that, that compliance is coming around. Um, okay. Page fifteen there. And so we do have, um, we have a floodplain administrator, and they kind of reviews what their, what, what they will review in their processes there.
Then we probably add that issue permit section. So that is currently in our code, fifteen point two five, one zero four zero, B two, one point five. So does that, does that sense, how a permit would be issued and how long would be filed for?
I would recommend, um, eliminating the one-year issue date. Just because in our construction season, it oftentimes takes more than a year to get a house built. And, uh, I think that's been a constraint for some of the permits that have gone out, because they've had to renew their permit, or they let it expire and then they're in violation.
So would you have any timeframe, or just, just no timeframe?
Uh, the borough just eliminated the one-year requirement, and it's a per-project expiration date. Oftentimes, if it's development of a new house, it'll be, you know, the end of the following year, so that gives you two construction seasons. For floodplain development, that's like the work that we do for maintenance in the creeks, like in Japanese Creek, when we go out in the channel. That's a five-year permit, um, outside of town. Whereas in town, I have to meet these guys every year and say, hey, can we renew our permit? So that was something the borough eliminated when we revamped our floodplain code. It's been, I think, less work for the staff, but also nice for the property owners to not have to be like, oh yeah, I have to renew that permit, because I'm not finished.
Yeah, we don't do a lot of like natural development, but that's good.
You guys have approximate zones and Resurrection River coastal flooding.
Right.
Not a lot of new floodplain. And I'll just point out, uh, four-two-three-A certification, um, around the lowest floor elevations. This is where that surveyor comes in and does an elevation certificate to certify. And then the property owner turns that in as part of their final floodplain permit requirement. And then on D there, the certification required for floodway encroachments. That is an engineer's, what we call a conveyance calculation, or a no-rise certification. So within the floodway, those were the hash marks we were looking at, Resurrection River. An engineer has to actually provide their stamp saying that there's gonna be no rise in the base flood elevation, no changes to the flood hazard boundaries. A good example is the airport project. The city has requested that they go ahead and do a letter map change, which is referenced later on in the code. Because their engineer, when they took a look at what the changes would be at the airport, they showed that there would be water surface elevation above the base flood elevations and that the flood hazard boundaries would expand. So as a national flood insurance program, the community has the option of saying, we want you to send that information to FEMA. We want FEMA to provide information back to us. And once you've completed your project, you need to change the map and show what changes have been made. And so that's called a CLOMAR-LOMAR, or conditional letter map revision. And once the project's finished, they do a letter map revision. And that's kind of a cooperative, uh, process with the community, the applicant, and FEMA to be able to do the development and make the changes as appropriate to what has been announced. That's, uh, that's what's happening with their projects.
I'm a little confused maybe, and then when we get a certificate of, um, you know, that you know the, the terrain on the property is in a certain way, and that, you know, it's been certified allegedly that, but what happens when things sort of change? You know, and somebody builds a home, and then all of a sudden, you know, not all of a sudden, but as, if things continue to erode, you know, that's not, that's no fault of theirs. I mean, what do they, what do people do then? Is it recourse, or, you know, because everybody has to jump through hoops to meet standards and requirements, but what happens when, you know, mother nature does her thing? And, you know, you're sort of, you know, stuck, you know?
At that point in time, I mean, you can choose to do a new flood insurance study and change the map. So all of our flooded, you know, flood hazard mapping is just that snapshot and tide.
Right.
Especially with, you know, the aluvial fans. The other mechanism that property owners have, if something's changed, so maybe you brought in a whole bunch of fill, and you raised your foundation above that base flood elevation, you can go through a process called a letter map amendment. So that is specific to one property. And sometimes you'll even have properties like, before the study, or after the study gets adopted, they collect data, you make changes to your property, study gets adopted, and it's showing you in a flood hazard area, but you actually increased your property on four feet of fill, and you're not actually in a flood hazard area. You can do it out as shown. So there are, you know, processes in place through FEMA that you can work through to make changes to an individual property.
Got it. Four point four. Okay, honey.
Is that in sure, and code, what's with the stat, section now, if we needed to add it?
Yeah. Uh, I would recommend, so the, uh, uh, so interpretation of firm boundaries, make interpretations where needed to exact location of boundaries in the areas of special flood hazard areas. That's something I would recommend staff would do. I would recommend that they hire a surveyor to show where the flood hazard boundary is on their property. And then again, if they disagree with it, they can go through that LOMAR process, that letter map amendment process for that property. So I don't think it's something that needs to be included in the code. Yeah. And I don't think that's part of the CFRs, or the federal regulations.
I wonder if we should add that permit to the rest of the schedule? So if they don't adopt it in a year, they're like, to be scheduled, I'm just seeing.
Make changes to the B schedule without updating the code?
Yes, yes. Yeah. And, um, yeah, so four point three is establishment of development permit. But that's where the, that's where it kind of talks specifically. The permit shall be for all structures and for all other development, including fill and other activities.
You might be covered by just the definition of development. Any man made change to approved or unapproved real estate, including but not limited to buildings or other structures, mining, dredging, filling, grating, paving, excavation, drilling operations, or storage of equipment or materials.
So we don't need to add that from our definition?
I don't think so. I think the definition of development.
Very covers that. Then we'll, we'll remove it, including placing the manufacturer. We went through this previously with, um, the fire chief and the building inspector as well, just to get their input.
And Stephanie, I want to explain a little bit, because this section of the model ordinance is a little bit different from our current code, which just details, um, regulations for like residential and non-residential. While this breaks it up a little bit more to the A zones and the B zones.
So A zones are the one-hundred-year flood hazard boundary. Uh, so that was the green on the map we were looking at. A E is one-hundred-year with elevations. So those are the A zones. We do have one A O zone, um, at the railroad docks. I can't think of any other A O zones within city limits. Andy might be able to help me out there.
What's the A O zone?
A O is, uh, is ponding, basically.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. And then V zones are velocity zones. So this is your coastal storm, storm surge. I have a little bit of issue with the coastal storm surge modeling, because they do a three-foot wave run-up, which, as we all know, during our November and December, you know, high tide events, uh, free fit is kind of a joke for a coastal storm surge. So, um, but V zones are that coastal storm surge, and they model that differently, because they're actually looking at the ocean coming up, hitting land, and what does that wave look like as it hits land and rolls in? So, um, those are the two differences between the A zones and the B zones. It's the land flooding and the coastal flooding. And then they've divided it out by, um, residential and non-residential structures, and those requirements are close difference.
Good. So we've, we've talked a little bit about down the road. It's not in our code now, um, but looking at, um, kind of a community map of that B zone, because we do deal with storm surges and that type of thing. And as water levels rise, you see kind of what happens in other communities. But that would, doing a, looking at, that, this is probably a few years down the road before we get into this, but looking at adopting a community map for that as well. So that way, if other development were to take place in some of those places, we want to make sure that they're kind of held to a little higher standard in some of those, um, zones where they could face coastal inundation, uh, in the future. And, uh, and so that's something that we talked a little bit about. But again, like the community map might be the best way, because it, I mean, FEMA might be prohibitive for people to do certain types of development or whatever. But, you know, the community map might be a good way to, to, to start and ensure people are building for structures on the places that are potentially, could potentially face that, so.
Let's not sound a little, uh, out of it, out of the, the wrong word, to tell you. It's mostly just residential, or not residential, but just building construction. I was sort of thinking, you know, we're building the, you know, the breakwaters or, or, you know, the coast guard, you know, cutter and all the rest of that stuff, all those things. Is this something that, um, you guys do too?
Would require a floodplain development.
Okay, yes.
So in, in the last year, we've reviewed the, uh, cruise ship terminal docks. Let's see, several years ago, we reviewed the breakwater on the other side. And the flood board doesn't approve these things. They make comments to the regulatory agencies. So within the city, that's the floodplain administrator. But we also provide those comments to like state DNR that owns navigable, or navigable waters and coastline, like, or the Army Corps of Engineers, which is all US waters and fishing games. So the flood board makes comments, and depending on who is writing on that permit or who needs to be writing on that permit, those comments are forwarded to the regulatory agencies.
Yeah, they, they rely on your expertise and consideration.
Yeah. But that futures hazards mapping, um, is kind of the butt spray where a lot of people are looking at climate change impacts. And we do have in our hazard mitigation plan, kind of, you know, fifty years out, what does climate change, how is it gonna be impacting flooding, coastal storm surge, and, and that type of information. And so actually creating maps around what does that future look like, and developing now for that future. Because fifty years from now, you know, we may have coastlines that are well beneath, you know, the ocean if, if sea level rises continuing, for example. So it's, a lot of communities, especially in the Pacific Northwest, that deal with a lot of the same issues we deal with sedimentation and coastal storm surge, they're actually looking at a future hazard map. And then they develop based on that future hazard map. Something to think about for the future.
Since, can I ask a question? Since we're talking about the different flood zone designations, and this is one that, one I've been curious about. It's over at SMIC, a big portion of SMIC is designated the D zone. So my question is, what is the D zone? And is that part of a regulatory area for development? And why did SMIC get the D instead of the zone X?
I'm sharing this with our friends online. So you can see we've got some AE zones in the green and then we've got the VE zone, the coastal storm surge. And over here, we've got a D. A lot of the other neighborhoods, this would say X. So an X zone is kind of that area between a 100-year and 500-year event. So it's kind of on the, you know, there's still a chance of flooding, but it's not as, you know, as risky as the AEs. So AE is the 100-year and then the D goes out to the 500-year. Because FEMA was mapping riverine and not alluvial fan flood hazard, most of our neighborhoods had a D, but we said the people in those neighborhoods are not going to be able to purchase flood insurance. They're in a risk area, even if you're not studying it and not mapping it. Will you please at least place those people in an X zone so they can have lower flood insurance premiums? So it was a way to encourage community members to purchase flood insurance, even if FEMA hadn't mapped them within the flood hazard area, knowing that our alluvial fans, there's a high risk of flooding in any given event. Over at Schmick, because there wasn't a lot of development, there wasn't, you know, private properties that were building out there. It wasn't a request that we made to make, change that into an X zone. So other neighborhoods have X zones, but Schmick does not. It's a good one.
Then section 5.0 gets into construction, which we did go over with the fire department and the building instructor. Just for input from a preliminary. And so again, we're going to remove that, that D there. Just because it's not permitted by building code. Then you're going to, once people done, are we going to add a review of building permits?
Yeah, is that necessary in your opinion, so can we add that section?
It is not. So on page seven of your original code, the review of building permits talks to when you don't have elevation data. So you don't have a base flood elevation or an AE zone or you don't have flood depths like we do outside the blue maps. And most of what it states here is that you would review those building permit applications so it would be reasonably safe from flooding. And that is a local judgment. And I think that the code for 5131B actually covers most of that, which is right here. So this is about where base flood elevation has not been determined. BFE will be determined locally, set up by criteria in 422. And then it states that a minimum of two feet above highest degree adjacent grade will lower your insurance premiums. So that goes back to that best available data piece. So that's the use of best available data there. And so again, if you chose to use that, you know, new mapping of the Japanese great alluvial fan, for example, or you had other data available from federal, state, or other reliable sources, you can use that as your elevation data. This is one example, the Scheffler Creek. FEMA mapped two flows of approximate A zone and there's no elevation data. So there were several houses built along Phoenix and, is it Resurrection? That were in that approximate A zone and there was no base flood elevation to provide them. So they were just told build at least two feet up, which may not have been the best option. We don't know because we didn't have any best available data. So I think that it's already covered. I don't think that we need to add that section.
Yeah, so 5.0 victories, the elevation and flood proofing, residential. We've got subcategories of residential construction and then we were talking about B high tide is kind of a funny gauge, especially in these parts.
Yeah.
Just because we have B high tide, but then also too, we have like spring tides, which also when you get like a lot of rain and you get some of these combining effects of flooding in the ocean and it can, again, it kind of goes off the line pretty quickly sometimes of like what B high tide actually is in that area, so.
And there is a kind of a FEMA or a federal push with the new infrastructure package for NOAA and USGS to do some coastal mapping. So we might be hearing about that in the future, where they're actually looking at the high tide with climate change added into it. So that might be rolling out to us in the next five, 10 years.
And then studies that we have like in these zones, you can see it, at 31, there was residential construction. Now we have 32, we have non-residential construction. You have stuff like hydrostatic, hydrodynamic loads. There's that, that app for, for structures.
So I feel sorry for people who are brand new into this because not only do they figure out what residential zone they live to live in and they got to worry about where they are in the flood map too. So all these alphabets, they're going to send them over the edge.
And so we have like standards for storage of materials and equipment, standards for water supply and waste disposal systems. Those are not huge here just because we kind of were getting away from onsite waste disposal systems. So it's still need to stay in there because they do it to, or they could exist technically by going to some spots.
One big change you'll see that's kind of key to flood hazard construction is these flood openings. And so if you're building with areas that are fully enclosed beneath the base flood elevation, so that's only allowed for parking of vehicles, access and storage, they're required to have flood vents or flood openings. And so there's, you know, like aftermarket products that have been engineered, you know, like smart vent. We've got one in our office, we're going to check it out. But you have to have flood openings within that enclosed structure. So if you have an enclosed crawl space, and this happens a lot in areas that were, you know, built in the 90s or the 2000s before we had mapping, is you have a completely enclosed crawl space and then floodwaters enter into it and then there's no way to get those floodwaters out. So flood openings are retrofit that private park areas can put in that help those floodwaters go in and out. It also decreases those hydrostatic pressures around the structure. So if you have floodwaters that encompass a structure, floodwaters are really powerful and the collapse of the structure can occur pretty simply by being surrounded by flooded. So this will see, you know, you'll see pictures after flooding of like entire structures that got flooded away or moved off their foundation or just completely collapsed from those hydrostatic pressures around the, around the foundations. So flood openings are one way to keep structures from basically flooding away or collapsing.
Does that only apply to crawl spaces? What about people, basements, I mean?
Basements are entirely excluded in flood, in special flood hazard areas. The low pay of basements. I do think that this section is a change from our current code, isn't it? Storage materials and...
I'd like to see an item there for those, that's good. Because it wasn't in there before. Nothing about that.
What about a carport or an post garage load grade?
That's allowed because it's parking, storage and access. So that's allowed below base flood elevation.
And then just leave the doors or something, flood doors on it?
Flood vents, yeah, flood vents, yep. So you have to, and in our, in the borough code, we actually put flood vents on two different walls so people don't put all their flood vents on one side and then floodwaters go in and there's no way for them to go out. So we actually...
You got to tell people that?
And, you know, there's all kinds of like technical bulletins that you can hand to people. Like here's how you build the structure. How do, how do we do, you know, flood proofing for a non-residential structure, for commercial structures? There's tons of information out there for contractors. But yeah, you would think you wouldn't need to say that. But flood vents, and then you're only allowed to use that space for parking, access and storage. Development proposals, you guys look at, you know, replants, subdivisions, that sort of thing. Adequate drainage plan and, and for any proposal that's 50 lots or five acres, base flood elevation has to be included in that proposal, special flood hazard.
And we're revising our subdivision here right now, drainage being included in that.
Good. If only we could figure out how to drain the groundwater.
Yeah, so.
I wanted to try and do the same, but I like seeing that section added in there in reference to like having some regulation about drainage in people's developments. And it would be nice if that was maybe extended outside the flood hazard area in the city.
Yeah.
Currently allowed to just put as much fill as you want and, and, you know, if you don't feel like being nice to your neighbor about it, you let floodwater on their, on their property that's been developed for longer and there's not really much recourse, is my understanding of it. And you just said you're looking, you're putting that in the type 16 as well?
Yeah, so, yeah. And that, but that's more under the subdivision agreement, not necessarily going to apply to like an individual property. But at least, I think I still think that's still helpful if it's forced to be in the subdivision agreement. So which is good.
Do you have anything addressing the adverse impact on the language in your regulatory?
So the flood board, when we review permit applications, we have a policy drafted for how we make comments. And I wish I had it in front of me, but basically like is it reasonably safe from flooding? Does it follow the code is one of the policies. And then the second policy is around a floodplain, national floodplain managers foundation of no adverse impacts. So no adverse impacts is kind of a principle around floodplain management that you actually look at, is this impacting upstream, downstream? The neighbors and drainage plans in our neighborhood are huge for when, you know, where is this water going when you build this four-foot driveway or this big building pad and floodwaters come in and hit that building pad? Are you now pushing that floodwater off on your neighbor? Or if you're, you know, building by the creek, are you causing a rise upstream, downstream? So that no adverse impact principle is something that the flood board looks at as part of our policy. It's not written in code, it's just best management practices.
I don't think we have like a specific language, at least I'm not super familiar with it. We've done it a few times, but I don't think we have a specific, as it applies to like outside the subdivision. I think, they still have to apply to, I mean, abide by code, which is like setbacks. And if there were drainage, would include not just there, not just the subdivision, but outside of it as well. So I'm trying to think if there's any other. I don't think we explicitly address it, but there's, I think, a lot of potential issues implicitly addressed just by the fact that it has the building codes and setbacks. But it's a good thing to think about.
It feels like snow loads on roofs. I think it has something written in there because when people have built a roof a certain way, it can't go and hit some of these properties in some way, I think.
We have, we have fire stuff with that too.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether, how they're stacked into each other or close to each other. Yeah. Yeah, I know both those are covered in building. Then we're looking, I mean, looking at removing this just because again, it's a manufactured homes. Building code issue.
And one question is, why don't we allow manufactured homes?
Building code?
Just the whole...
They're doing it to adoption and it's a manufactured home, I think. It's not in their definition of what they have in there. So we don't want to introduce a foreign definition. I think there's lots of different ways where you do build a home. We just don't call them manufactured homes, but, so.
Yeah, I was just sort of wondering because there's a lot of, you get down lower 48, a lot of, you can buy all kinds of manufactured homes and they're all like kits or whatever, isn't you just plop it in there and you're...
Yeah, I don't think...
Prefabricated.
Prefab.
Yeah, yeah. So manufactured home is a very specific definition in FEMA. So a manufactured home is a structure that's transportable in one or more section, built on a permanent chassis and is designed for use with or without a permanent foundation and attached to utilities. So it's, it's not a prefabricated structure. It's actually something that you need to avoid.
I have a theory on it too. I think that the city wants, the building department wants permanent foundations to specifications that get past frost depth and are seismically okay. They don't care if it's a manufactured home or if it's a custom-built stick frame home as long as it's on that adequate foundation. And so, you know, you just, who cares if it's prefabricated, if it's on a truck.
But the foundation is key.
It's just a theory.
Yeah. I know, I know that, that, I know that the foundation piece is a very big part of it, that it has to go down like 42 inches and, and all those things. And so that the fact that those could be or not be on it, that too, I think. You could have a manufactured home, I think it's building code, there would, might not be a manufactured home.
I don't know when it transitions, but yeah, it'd be complicated, I guess. I just, I just wanted to know.
And I think there's a date of like the change to requirements for manufactured homes, like a certain date. They changed, you know, what the requirements are with the manufactured homes. It depended on if you had a 1970s manufacturer or if it's... It depended on if you had a nineteen-seventies manufactured home or existed.
Yeah.
Like with standards for recreational vehicles.
This is your waterfront campground.
Yeah.
I also look, figured out about the recreational vehicles. If this, if I'm reading it correctly, this is going to only apply to properties that are in a special flood hazard area. All right, so then that would be, let's say, that approximate A-zone that we've been referring to that goes along Phoenix and Resurrection, that would apply. If this was adopted, it would apply to those places, right? So somebody like built their house a few years ago and raised it up and did, and got the floodplain permit and everything. This reads to me like now they would have to not, or they would have to move their personal use recreational vehicle after a hundred and eighty days? But the city code changed somewhat recently, in the past few years, to allow one recreation vehicle, one recreational vehicle to be stored on somebody's, any property, any zone, district for all year round. So this might be like some kind of a conflict there.
Yeah, I agree. Good, good catch.
So floodways are the hash marks, is our high velocity zone, so it's likely that they'll be carrying debris, projectiles. There's lots of erosion potential in our, our areas. So this is the most regulatory, or most regulated flood zone is the floodway. Basically, if you want to build or do any development within the floodway, you have to have an engineer prove that you're not going to cause a rise. So you prohibit encouragements unless you can have an engineer provide you with a conveyance calculation. FEMA is very specific about what that conveyance calculation entails. But basically, an engineer has to be able to stamp that there will not be a rise in base flood elevations in any cross-section in the FEMA model, nor will there be an extension or a change to the flood hazard boundaries. So this is why the airport project is required to have a lower and lower, is because their engineer should authorize it more than one cross-section and extension of flood hazard boundaries. So floodways are highly regulated and basically for a good reason. This is the raging, raging waters of the floodings.
Yeah, and then the model we're in is going to have as, as many details as their current code does about the appeal board. It's on page nine. So we'll probably add that.
What does the appeal board do? How is it different from the variance procedure?
Well, from my understanding is if the verdict of a variance or a variance, a variance if they're not granted a permit, was not to someone's liking, then they would, they would appeal board to fill whatever decision they did agree with.
We're saying you want to add that language that it just tells the public, you've gotten a right to appeal the decision, that standard.
Yeah. Because I think we have that, any type of decision, like a submission would make. So they can appeal, the Board of Appeals, the Superior District Council. They're like, see if these variances deny replastic zones.
So I know variances have been issued to some of the hangars at the Siren Airport for various reasons. You know, obviously it's in the flood hazard area, it's the only airport, and the taxiways that you drive your airplane on are below base flood elevation. So variances have been granted for some of the hangars that have been built out there. I believe they were still, had to be floodproofed because they're non-residential structure. And then they obviously have to have flood openings, most of those are the hairdo. But so I think variances have been approved in the past, but I think that would be needed for giving examples.
Okay, that's about it. Does the appendix, which we will pull those, all the state definitions, we will pull those.
So I just have one quick question. It says when you have the, this area, the variance procedure, and I was looking at the actual code, where they have the appeal board and the rest, are you going to be deleting that whole section or are you keeping that whole section?
We will.
Because it's, it's a bit different from, from the, I just don't know.
We'll make sure it's in alignment with some kind of current city.
Okay. Yeah, the, the steps are super, are, you know, very specific here and I was just wondering.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure those are in alignment with our, kind of city policy institution.
That would be a big change.
Yeah, that would be, everyone states it there for sure.
And I just point out, it's been many months since we've seen each other, but we did go over the hazard mitigation plan at our last joint work session. And FEMA does provide some consideration for flood-prone areas in our planning considerations. So I don't think this has to be adopted in the code, that this might be something that, when you guys do review floodplain permits or we're looking at, you know, flood hazard areas, that we kind of look at some of these considerations. It does include the adverse impacts of development, non-existing development out there, so.
What percentage of sort is not going to flood hazard, you know, you see all the things that are a, a, a percentage? I mean, up the hill, I mean, you know.
Yeah. Not, I don't know the exact percentage.
Yeah, I know, it tends to be pool park and I just, it just, it just seems like everybody's a little bit at risk somewhere along the way here.
Third and A corner has never flooded over the years and all the subsequent floods in the history of sort.
Which, which street, which street?
One house on Third and A. It's the only thing that's never been hit by a flood, even when we had the flood coming down Jefferson Street in the thirties.
I'm pretty safe, I'm pretty on fourth today.
It's an oddity. But if that dam ever gave way and the tunnel plugged up, everything down below would be lost.
I would say that the majority of our neighborhoods have some flood hazard risk. If you have property outside of town, up on hillsides, flood hazard is not an issue for you. Knowing what I know, I might be looking behind me to see if a landslide was an issue. And just so you guys know, we did have a landslide report in Japanese Creek over the weekend, late Saturday night. If you ever see creek waters stop suddenly or all of a sudden turn very, very, very muddy, there's potentially an landslide up in the canyon. And a surgely flooding event is very possible in most of our, our suburbs as well. Just because you're out of flood hazard area doesn't mean you're out of a hazard area.
Yeah. That's like Snow River, something, you know, the glacier stuff up behind there, there was something, something that broke a few years ago.
Yeah, the, 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 the snow dam, the lake dams up and it rises, rises, rises and then it releases.
It's like a little creek when part of Mount Marathon runs off on the backside. You see it's trying to slow down a little bit from waterfall. That's another thing for the same problem.
Did Mount Alice, that middle hole, Mount Alice slide, did you hear that? That was hu, that was a massive slide.
That's actually called mass wasting, because it's an entire face of a mountain that drops. And we had another one this summer on Mount Alice on the south face. So that's like the, you know, the face that everybody's seen, but if you go around that next one, there was another landslide there. And a couple of years back, we had a landslide up at the top of Salmon Creek that got reported by an equipment operator south of Bruno Road Bridge. They had worked the eighteen event and they heard my safety spiel and they called me up in June one afternoon and they're like, hey, water just slid to a trickle, what do I do? Moving my stuff out. Mark was able to fly in and there was a landslide that occurred up in the canyon and it took several days for that to release. Luckily, it wasn't a complete urban dam that was created in the canyon. But as you look up our mountainslides, you know, flooding isn't the only issue that we face. And when there's an earthquake, the city starts to evacuate for a tsunami. But I go look up in the canyons to see if we have a landslide here, so that's our next big threat up there.
Stephanie, what you mentioned, what the floodboard's doing in regards to the upper reaches of the waterways with our LiDAR.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good one. So the floodboard had appropriated some funding for new LiDAR data of Salmon Creek because we've got very updated maps for much of the Salmon Creek area. And we got into contact with USGS and with State DDGS and we are going to be looking at collecting new LiDAR data for the entire service area and the Alpine reaches. So we'll have brand-new digital elevation data. It sounds like FEMA is going to actually fund that. State DDGS is going to be the project manager on that. And there's several different state and, and national or federal agencies that are very interested in certain areas. So they're actually going to collect huge LiDAR data. They're, I think they're going to go all the way down to past Tomcena Point, all the way up to like Keenhead Lake, and they're going to collect new LiDAR data. And the reason we really pushed for collecting the Alpine reaches was because we want to start looking at those landslide potential and do some landslide analysis and some mapping of landslides in our area. And it was very timing because we had scheduled our meeting with the State Risk map coordinator and, and the State DDGS and FEMA and we were in the middle of a little point landslide. So I think that got kind of pushed up on our priorities list and hopefully come spring we'll have new LiDAR data and we can start looking at new, new landslide analysis.
Wow. Well, thank you so much. That was huge.
I have a question for you, because I think you touched on it in the beginning, but it has to do with the new data that's going to inform the proposed community map, right? When, when is that coming out?
We don't have a timeline yet.
Okay. And then just one of the things that I'm thinking about, at least with this, is like a big, pretty big decision that the city is going to have to make is like to just, are you going to adopt the firm map as is or like also add this community map, which is going to probably, it's going to expand the area, create like extra regulations. So probably won't see that before you adopt it. Or would you, what's your timeline on this? Like, would you want to adopt it, use the current firm map and get it approved and adopted and then maybe consider tacking on the community map app? Or are you going to wait for the community map data to bring it all forward?
Like, we, Stephanie also has a city administration as well on this. And so I think that we are leaning towards just using the best available data. So, you know, sort of like going to, or like identifying the best available data without yet quite yet adopting the community map.
Okay. Then currently is our best available data, what we're looking at, flood insurance rating map, twenty sixteen information provided by FEMA? Or is there other data or best available? Like that's a pretty...
Yeah. Right now, our best available data is the, is the Armory Corps of Engineers study on Japanese Creek. So that is our best available data.
Okay.
How old was that again?
That was done last, last year.
Okay.
And then the new flood hazard mapping, that'll be a decision, I think, for the, the city commission. I'm sure it'll come in for PNC and Kielbrot. And we don't know what those maps are going to be.
Kind of like with the tsunami maps too, you want to, before you like accept all the ramifications of those things, you want to understand what they look like before you, how they got to that, when you do all those things before you, just going to be careful what you're doing, what you're agreeing to.
Well, that insurance scares off a lot of people too. I mean, it's like buying earthquake insurance or, you know, you know, if all of a sudden now you're in a flood, you know, flood zone of some sort, all of a sudden. I don't know how much it goes up, but I hear it's pretty significant for flood insurance.
Can I add a little bit to that? Once you're added to the flood map, to the flood insurance rate map, I'm not a lawyer, but I've been told that you cannot, or the bank has the option of requiring you to maintain that insurance as long as you have a loan with the bank once it's actually put onto a flood map, even if you were not on the flood map.
For a FEMA map.
For the FEMA.
Flood determination companies that your bank hires does not look at the community.
Yeah. They don't look at best available data. They're just partnering with the insurance companies.
Okay, well, thank you.
Do you guys have any other questions for the board or Stephanie?
We should do this more often though. I know it's probably more of a headache for you guys, but you know, it's, I think, the last time was, I was fairly new on the commission, brand new, right?
Six months ago.
Six months, seems like it was longer.
Yeah, we used to meet quarterly and then I think you guys had PNC commissioners. We used to meet quarterly and I think you guys got really busy working on a lot of different things. And so we stopped meeting quarterly and moved it to twice a year. I think the flood board would be open to additional meetings.
We should meet every couple of months, four months or five months, so we can keep the tune to everything.
That'd be a good idea. Probably maybe our next meeting, then chat about that. I don't know if that's something we have to formally request or do whatever, but we'll, we'll see. And I think it'd be a good idea, because I think with all the building that we're doing, things, you know, these, these, you know, whether they're subdivisions, you know, the thing that's going on, right now, everything's pretty high up. I don't think that's really a flood night, but there's things that may come along, whether it's on the other side of the bay or, you know, you know, around lower parts of town, might be something just for us to be aware of, certain things.
Yeah, because I think with the, you know, the Borough Road dock expansions that there is. Good information to share.
All those things, yeah, all these buildings that's coming around and stuff like this, yeah. Good deal.
All right. Thanks everybody.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Really appreciate it.
Recording stopped.
City offices are closed, Bob.